He said he was just trying to take a nap today. So everybody. Great. Turn your phone off.
Can you get the recorder? Happened today? Okay, fine.
Watching the car. Great.
And it's gonna wanna call.
It falls asleep.
We all look back at that.
Yes ma'am, let's go.
We are recording.
Amy, you call the order roll call and establish a quorum.
Yes ma'am. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason? Justin?
Yes.
If you're pregnant with me, please. Our Father, we come to you tonight, we just thank you for the blessings of being a part of this little great city that we get the honor to live in. Father, I pray your blessings upon each and every staff member. I pray your blessings upon this commission. I pray that you give us wisdom and discernment when it comes to making decisions for our citizens. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Number four. Consideration and action on consent agenda. Commissioners, you have any? You wanna fill out?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Number six. Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items that are not on today's agenda. Anyone? Okay, no action. Number seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve modified agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for Police Department Body Cameras and Tasers and Storage and Video over five years for an unchanged total of sixty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. Surge.
Yeah, the agreement stays the same monetarily. There were some issues that the city attorney had with certain aspects of the contract that she was able to get worked out with Axon. This would memorialize those changes and better protect the city.
Okay.
If needed.
Well, we, this was with the one we didn't actually have an agreement. We thought we did.
So that was two months ago?
Yeah, like just, cuz this is a little different than, than what you've seen before. At least since I've been here. For what? With these bigger companies, a lot of times they have these thirty-two pages of terms and conditions and I go through and I change the ones that I'd like to be changed, redline them, send them off. Or usually the staff will eventually send them off to the other side. This one came back before you saw it, before you saw it last time. And they said, sure, those are, all those changes are fine. Surprised, but okay. And so we put the contract before you and then it got sent to, back to them for signature and they went, oh, no, that's not the version that we saw. No, we're not okay with some of this. And so my, my first reaction or response was, hey, we have a contract. And then their attorney correctly pointed out that when there's a mistake in, in the terms, a true mistake, that is a defense and we need to go fix it up, you know, fix it. So I said, well, let's figure out how we can fix it and, and I don't really know what to do to get it back on the agenda. But we did, they got it signed. And so this is approving, we're calling it amended. It is amended from what you approved before, but it wasn't really a contract. So that's why this is back on your agenda.
Do we already have the tasers?
Yes.
We have, not under this contract, but with, with this company.
Yeah, yes, we do.
Yeah. But under this contract?
Uh huh. I thought we'd already had a little bit of training.
Oh, well, that's a good thing we got a contract now. I know we've done this with them in the past, right? Yeah.
Have we, so after we sign this or approve it, if the case may be that, will we receive updated cameras?
No, we already have.
We already have, so we're just kinda?
Going backwards.
Catching up, okay. Gotcha. Don't limit it at that. All right. Thanks for looking out for us, Amy. I make a motion that we approve the modified agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for the Police Department Body Cameras, Tasers, and Stores of Video for five years for an unchanged total of sixty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents.
One second.
Stop, Jason. This is not here.
Your hair?
Sarah's and Jay's, oh my gosh. This next thing is gonna go here. Yes, sorry.
Sarah? Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
So soft.
Did you get my yes? Okay. She didn't get your?
Yeah.
Didn't get my second.
But she got your yeah. Right. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve contract with Michael Green CPA in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand, fifty dollars for preliminary work and to audit and prepare financial statements for the year ending June thirtieth, 2023.
This is the annual audit that we do as required by law. I would recommend approving.
Same, same company from last year?
Yes.
I recall. It says basically the same thing from last year.
I make a motion to approve contract with Michael Green CPA in an amount not to exceed two twenty thousand, fifty dollars for preliminary work and to audit and prepare financial statements for the year ending in June thirtieth, 2023.
My second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Number nine. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Charlie Butler for Inspection Services, July one, 2023 through June thirtieth, 2024.
This, uh, the form of the agreement has changed. But the monetary increase, I think it's changed.
The form of the agreement, how it changed, how it changed since last year?
Okay, it's just an increase of two hundred and fifty dollars per month based on the amount of building that's going on. I think that is a fantastic deal. He handles everything. Well, Amy does a lot of the administrative stuff, but as far as plan, review, and inspections, Charlie does them all. He's here three days a week.
That was my question, I was gonna ask how many days a week he's here. Welcome to Perkins, Amy. Feel like every month you're getting a new job.
Sometimes every other day.
Bob is over there going, no comment.
Excuse me.
Commissioners, you have any questions on that?
No.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve agreement with Charlie Butler for Inspection Services, July first, 2023 through June thirtieth, 2024.
My second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Okay, number ten. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four agreement with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge one forty-two. Mr. Ernst, you just said there were just a couple of little minor changes.
Yeah, the compensation changed. We added a step at police officer level. We added lieutenant position. And then there's the pay increase that was voted on with the budget is in there. Added some language in the nondiscrimination. Age, gender, color, sexual orientation, marital status, things like that were added. Kyle, if you think of something I missed. Oh, we, on the equipment allowance, it's a thousand dollars a year. But the, we added the uniform and equipment allowance will commence after the officer has completed six months of service. So if it falls different, they'll get, you know, it's paid in two checks. So your first year, you'll probably get one five hundred dollar check for equipment. We provide everything when you start. Benefits are the same as city employees. Physical fitness incentive remained. I think that's about it.
Big stuff, yes.
Physical fitness part, they have to before provide their own workout fees? Or is it just if they pass this physical fitness test?
If they pass the test.
So they can work out?
It's set.
Okay.
And they can work out, I think it's an hour a day.
Hour a day if there's two officers on.
If there's two officers on.
No reports pending.
Who gives that test, out of curiosity?
We do. Yep. Kyle usually oversees it.
Stop, look. Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four agreement with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge number one.
My second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Number eleven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Social Advocate Associates LLC to provide grant administration services for the community grants Environmental Protection Agency sewer project in the amount not to exceed eleven thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty cents, subject to an acceptable contract.
This, this is to administer the EPA grant. It's very, it's congressionally budgeted funds at the federal level. It's written into the budget. Perkins gets this much. When I talked to the EPA, they said, yeah, we know you get this much, but now you have to apply for the grant that you already awarded, so we can award you the grant. And then there's gonna be different reporting things that have to happen because it's federal money. This would be for these people to administer it with the not to exceed amount that you stated. I believe these funds will be able to come out of the grant. If not, they can come out of the match. If our match is waived, then they will possibly come out of ARPA funds. If that won't work, then they'll come out of the budget. So I'm comfortable with paying this.
So, I mean, we have to pay it to get the?
Well, we could ostensibly do this ourselves, but we would be walking in the dark. And if you mess up, then you cannot get, you run the risk of no more federal money.
Yeah, if you mess up on a federal grant, then you run the risk of not being eligible for another federal.
These people do them and it's, it's a little bit confusing because we already have it, but we don't. So we just thought it would be easier to let a professional do it and then we don't have to worry about it.
And of course, this company is approved by the federal government?
Yes.
Okay. And we would wait? If approved tonight, we would just wait on a more formal?
Yeah, Tammy, city attorney, and then we'll work out the details for the city's protection.
We're very close to, to an agreement. But I don't think it's gonna be a problem. We're very close, we just aren't there.
Just ran out of time.
We'd ask that if you do a motion to approve, that you say subject to acceptable contract.
And that would require coming in there to be proper signatures?
Yeah, you just stop by.
Yes.
Just stop by.
Just, just stop.
Get a photo up.
We can do that.
Huh?
Photo.
She loves them.
That's why. I love all the dolls.
I make a motion to approve the agreement with the Social Advocate Associates LLC to approve grant administration services for the community grants Environmental Protection Agency sewer project in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents, which would be subject to an acceptable contract.
One second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
The Vice Mayor and I, we love taking pictures.
You don't, you don't, you don't rope me into that.
What you did on Saturday. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Direct-to-Completion LLC to provide professional services for the Oklahoma Water Resource Board, American Rescue Act, American Rescue Plan Act. Water Tower and Sewer Lift Station Project in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, four hundred, subject to acceptable contract. So.
This is for a consulting group to represent us as we move forward with the water tower, the five million dollars in ARPA funds. About two and a half that's coming from the state, the other two and a half that's coming from the Iowa Tribe to build the water tower and lift station for their project. I didn't, it's not, it will, it's necessary for their project. It will be a huge benefit to the entire city. So what Direct-to-Completion will do is represent us at the table. Full transparency, they're also representing the tribe on their project, but we need, I feel like we need?
On a different project.
Well, yeah.
Different project, same area, right?
Similar. These two projects go hand in hand.
Yes.
This, this would allow?
Out west?
Yes. We need somebody to bridge the gap, to communicate on both sides. They already know what's going on. They have the expertise. They can get us through the planning to the, where we select an engineer, start to get, find out exactly what needs to be done. This will get us up basically to construction. And then when we bid it out for construction, there may be another agreement with this company or, or some other construction management firm. Cuz there's gonna be a lot of coordination. There's gonna be certain things they need to do with their project that'll dictate when we do things with our project. And there's a lot of moving pieces.
Sounds like it would make sense to use the same company that's?
Unless there's some strange anomaly, I would agree with that.
Because in terms of timeline, that's, that's?
Yes.
One less person to have to communicate transparency with if they know what's going on on both sides.
And it's kind of another layer of protection for the city. Because if, when we hire an engineer, so, a lot of times engineers will act as the project manager. And they have a license to protect, which usually means they're gonna kinda ultra protect their client. But this is a bunch of construction people with a lot of experience that can talk to the engineers and say, you know, the city needs this, this, this. The tribe needs this, 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 we need a little work together. So I think it will help tremendously.
I, I do like their timeline that they wrote down for their services. This month to the thirty, to November thirtieth. And did I read on here that they would give advice as far as bidding?
Yeah, they'll, they'll assist with?
Some consulting advice on the bidding part?
They'll assist with the request for qualifications for the engineer. They'll assist with the planning with the selected engineer and design. And then they'll assist with putting together a bid packet to bid project out and assist with tabulation and documentation, so we can make a good decision on the contractors to complete the work. And then that's where this stops. And then we would move forward potentially with another agreement where they oversee construction. I think it only makes sense, I was a little bit skeptical at first because I haven't really used a service like this. We've kinda done it ourselves, but with so many moving parts, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a big project. I mean, big.
You have two entities trying to mesh together.
And if we have somebody in the middle?
Right.
That can talk to us, talk to them, it's just easier.
So does the Iowa Nation know they?
Yes. Yeah, we had, we sat down with them, with their business committee and the chairman of the tribe. And we discussed this and they think it's a good idea.
Fantastic.
There's no animosity or worry about, you know, who's serving who. And they're working for us, they're gonna be working for us. They're just gonna, they just know all the parties and it's easier.
You sound like a great idea, so. Takes some pressure off of relationships and?
Yep.
And just, they're busy, we're busy. I like it. Commissioners, anything? And I also, before I, I also really like what they, their proposal and their service plan to me was pretty thorough and easy to read, but I like bullet statements, so that's.
Yeah, this, this one, I'd ask that it be subject to acceptable contract as well, which is on the agenda. We, we put a contract in front of you, I thought it was acceptable and then I just looked at it again and I've decided it's not. So we're gonna keep working on it a little bit.
That's okay.
So you have to come back anyway.
I just live two minutes away. Right. I make a motion to accept and approve the agreement with Direct-to-Completion LLC to provide professional services for the Oklahoma Water Resource Board in the American Rescue Plan Act. Water Tower and Sewer Lift Station Project in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars, subject to an acceptable contract.
My second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Number thirteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve or deny permit for an animal or fowl pen at three twelve East Hurt Avenue. Sabina Johnson, could you speak?
I'm gonna be here for her, Tracy Farmer.
Okay, so Mr. Farmer, if you'll come up to the podium?
Yes ma'am.
And tell Ms. Amy what your name and address is and then you'll have five minutes to speak.
Okay.
Please, please address anything to me and not directly to staff or the commissioners. But if the commissioners wanna speak to you, they are certainly allowed.
Yes ma'am. So Tracy Farmer, address is five oh nine Northeast Sixth Street. M and B and Perkins. So basically what we're asking for is to be able, to allow us to be able to raise laying hens. This is what we're looking at. And we have three ducks in the pen also. So like I said, basically that's what we're looking for, is just permission to be able to have chickens in town. We have a, a existing pen that was already there prior to my daughter moving in. So we're using that as a area for the chickens and ducks to be able to be kept and taken care of. At the time of the inspection, when the inspector was out there, we had, at that point, we had three ducks and I believe it was either two or three chickens. But since then, we've lost all of our chickens now. We've had some fowl get in or something get inside and kill all the chickens. The ducks are still there. We do have a small hutch that we had two, we had two babies in at this point. We've recently put a, a blue tarp across the top of the pen to keep any farmets out of it, cuz we didn't know if they were trying to climb over the fence, fly, fly over the fence or how they were getting in. So I put a temporary fix, just put blue tarps over the top of the pen to keep everything in and keep everything out.
So Sabina is your daughter?
Yes.
And you, you live close there?
Yes ma'am, I live just across town, I'm about two minutes away. I'm, basically the chicken, the chicken and duck, you know, it's kinda both of us is thing. We do it together. She's done it in the past and I used to raise chickens all the time whenever I was younger. And so I'm just kinda helping her with the knowledge of how to do it and what to do with them.
Right. What are you raising them for?
For laying eggs.
And will you sell the eggs?
If we get enough eggs, yes ma'am. But I don't ultimately see us getting, getting that many eggs. I mean, I'm one of those type guys that I like, if possible, I like to have a couple of eggs each day myself. So basically, it's more for personal use than, you know, any kind of a commercial use.
So. Mr. Farmer?
Yes ma'am.
There, there are just, there's a couple of issues here that? Number one. Any citizen, to include any of us, we need to file the paperwork before we have the animals on our property.
Yes ma'am.
Or there would be issued a citation.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah. I'll go into that in a little bit. The second thing is, at the time of your application, not only did you already have the animals, you listed five fowl, you actually had nine on your property at this time.
Yes.
And so that would make the application almost null and void at that time.
Okay, I understand.
The other thing is, all of this can be corrected.
Yes ma'am.
Before I finish, I will say that I don't begrudge anybody having any type of legal animal, chickens, whatever's listed in our ordinance is, as long as we do it in a proper order. I'm not gonna, I'm not willing to turn people down and, I mean, we've already approved it for people. So the, I'm not sure that your pens are large enough.
Okay.
It's listed in the ordinance. And if you don't have a copy of it, you can certainly have mine. But the pens need to be nine hundred square feet for each fowl pen and not less than fifteen hundred square feet for animal, that depends on the larger ones. And then the pen needs to be at least a hundred and fifty feet away from any dwelling. So you've got that one with the ducks, right there up at the house.
Yes ma'am.
So I'm not a code enforcement, I'm just reading the ordinances. And I'm sure Mr. Ernst could, could help me with that, as far as that goes. But I'm not gonna speak for any other commissioners. Do you guys have any questions or have?
I have some questions, so perhaps you know this, I think Sabina already has some permits for some other types of animals at this residence. Is that correct or no?
Sabina? No.
Yes.
Our landlord, her landlord may have prior to us moving in, but as far as Sabina, no.
So it's, it's just the chickens and the ducks then?
Yes ma'am.
Those are the only animals on the property?
Well, she has, she has a dog and a cat. But, you know, as far as the rest of it, no. Cuz I know our landlord prior to us moving in did have big cats there.
So you're, you're, she's located over here, right?
Yes.
Side town?
Yeah, and I'm over here on the other side. Can, if, if you don't mind, can I address part of what you said, please?
Absolutely.
Whenever we come in, and, and I'm gonna blame myself for the ignorance part of not realizing that we needed to have a permit. Basically, I just went off hearing other chickens and such as in town and just kind of assumed it was okay. Cuz I, I'm an old Perkins, Perkinian, I was here in the nineties. And back then, we used to have chickens, you know, all over the place and it wasn't no big deal. So it, you know, I honestly didn't think about it. So we did find out from the neighbor directly to the, what, west of us, the Stillwater Police Officer's wife, she said something about it to us. She said, well, I think you gotta go get your permit, so which we did. And on the permit that we got, it did say within a hundred feet on the permit.
That's the adjacent houses.
Okay.
That's your neighbors.
Okay, yeah.
But the, it says the pen itself should be a hundred and fifty feet from any dwelling.
Okay, without, and my understanding was without permission being signed off from that particular neighbor, which we got their permission, the people to the west and east of us both. I did not seek permission from either one, north or south, because they're more than a hundred, you know, a hundred feet or a hundred and fifty feet. So that's why I didn't see permission from those guys.
I, I don't, I don't wanna, Mr. Farmer, I don't wanna come across like critical, I'm just like?
No, you're not.
I have to follow?
No, I understand. I, I totally understand all that.
You know, I'm willing to? This is me personally, I'm, I'm willing to just please get in compliance?
Yes ma'am.
Reapply?
Yes.
So that just a warning could be?
Yes ma'am.
And then there doesn't have to be a, a side. And then there doesn't have to be a citation, in my opinion, right now. But we've got to get that done in a timely manner.
Yes ma'am.
And I just feel like, this, this has happened more than once, and I'm just a young mayor. So I, I just want all of us to be able to.
Oh, I totally.
I think it helps our city when we can do that.
Yes ma'am, I totally agree, I totally agree, and I don't have any problem trying to do whatever I need to do, you know, with Bob and Amy. To be able to, you know, to make, to make sure that I am in compliance.
Well, I, I know that Mr. Ernst and his staff will go above and beyond to try to help make sure that you are in compliance. So, commissioners, any, anything? So at this time.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I make a motion that we deny the permit for the animal or foul pen at three one two East Hurt Avenue, and direct staff to possibly help the family make sure they're in compliance.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, I will do that.
I guarantee it'll be a good one for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, all right?
Absolutely.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Number fourteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution eight dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution establishing fees for parks and recreation as recommended by Perkins Parking Recreation Board.
This would increase the field use fees, day, month, and season, from fifty to a hundred, one oh five to one twenty-five, and two ten to two sixty. They did research with surrounding communities.
I.
Came up with these numbers.
I like, I like the pleasant increase and not the drastic increase, and I know that that was probably difficult for them. So I appreciate their work and what they've done on that. But, yeah, okay, so if they're signed up with us, they don't have to read the field? It's that if they're not signed up to us, they've got to read the field?
Correct.
Commissioners, any questions?
I make a motion to approve Resolution eight dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution establishing fees for parking recreation as recommended by our Perkins Parking Recreation Board.
Second.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
You gonna jump in on those seconds?
Ouch. You said something.
Come on, I mean, Jason's not here tonight, but Justin's, he got in there a little bit.
Number fifteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for Perkins Industrial Development Authority Trust, one open appointed trustee position with a term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
I don't have anything.
No action.
Number sixteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for Perkins Planning Commission, open position, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint Marla Kavanaugh to Perkins Planning Commission, open position, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
And Marla did submit a letter that's in the packet stating she would like to be appointed to the, well, it says Planning Commission and Flood Plane Board. But this agenda item is to, for the Planning Commission, she wants to be on both, so.
Did she have an opportunity to visit with you already?
Briefly, briefly.
Um, I know Marla Kavanaugh, actually have worked with her, she's a very, uh, a little follower and structured person, very thorough.
That's what it takes.
She's gonna, she's gonna ask questions, but she's gonna be polite about it. She's a very pleasant person, she was a school counselor at the Perkins Park and Schools, and she was also a science teacher at one time. So, anybody?
I'll make a motion to appoint Marla Kavanaugh to Perkins, open position, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
One second.
I'm not stepping on that.
Sarah?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, number eighteen, is that where we're on, Amy, eighteen? Okay, I'm not, my check marks got off.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for Perkins Flood Plane Board, open position, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
It's the same, the only letter we have is from Marla Kavanaugh.
So that's a. Yeah.
Number nineteen. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint Marla Kavanaugh to Perkins Flood Plane Board, open position, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
I make a motion to appoint Marla Kavanaugh to Perkins Flood Plane Board, open position, term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Number twenty. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the contract with Oklahoma Department of Transportation for Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Project for Sidewalk on Thomas Street with the city share being seventy-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Mr. Ernst?
Is this a ten percent match?
Yeah, it's the, this is the TAP, ODOT TAP, this is to memorialize. We, we've been to the meetings where we applied for the grant, we've been to the meeting where we received the grant. Now we're actually starting rolling, so we'll get this contract signed that everybody is happy with, and start the design. Where an engineering firm that's contracted with ODOT will come in and design the sidewalks, ADA compliant and all that. And then we'll use that to go out to bid. When they get done with design, it'll take a few months in design.
So, ODOT is in charge of the engineering design part?
Yes, they will basically, and everything, we'll be working together, but when, when we bid the project out, ODOT actually does that.
Okay.
They let it, send it out to all their people, they follow the guidelines. And we're just kind of along for the ride, the benefit of it.
There, I think we actually hire the engineer though, if I'm remembering correctly.
It ha, yeah, it has to be, it has to be one of their approved vendors.
Oh yeah, the contract was, was so pleasant to read.
Yeah.
It's all about what we do, what we're gonna do, right?
I had to turn the TV off, Tammy. I actually had to focus. So yeah, I mean, there are a lot of, uh, we gotta cross our Ts and dot our Is on this one and make sure that we are in compliance with everything so that they won't take a, take it away from us.
But they are, they're paying ninety percent, we're paying ten percent, and they're doing most of it, so.
I like it.
Easy, fairly easy for us to comply.
Yeah.
If we let them.
So we don't, we don't know yet if it's gonna be, you know, towards the south of that old, what's left of that old sidewalk, or where that old sidewalk is.
We don't know that yet.
That's just a curiosity question.
Yeah. That'll come out in design, but the, the right of way in the old part of town, the streets are eighty feet wide. The actual pavement isn't eighty feet wide, but the right of way is eighty feet wide. So there's a lot of room for them to figure it out.
These sidewalks will be within our right of ways, so we're not having to acquire any property or relocate anybody or.
No.
A big hurdle we'll have, the water crossing on Timberline, that's been factored in.
Cost.
Cost.
I love that idea, I'm so glad that was factored in. And yes, I, after reading this, I was, I'm glad to hear that there's no land in shoes that will have to subsequently dilute.
I may be a minority, but I don't think that agreeing with ODOT to even at ten ninety sometimes, but, is a great idea for cities. I think we need to be very careful about what our agreements look like with ODOT.
So I trust that, you read this forward and backward for me?
Yes, I did.
I did?
And ask a few que, it's just standard agreement.
It's a candid agreement.
I didn't change anything about the agreement, I just asked the questions to see.
ODOT's response could very well be, well, we won't give you seven hundred and five thousand dollars then.
Right. This is not a case where you might want to consider not doing it, but there are some, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you for your due diligence. I'm sure you have any other questions or concerns?
All right, I make a motion to approve the contract with the, uh, ODOT, the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for Transportation Alternatives Program, Grant Project for Sidewalk on Thomas Street with the city share being seventy-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Almost did it. Got her toe in the water.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Twenty-one. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve commitment of seventy-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to complete sidewalk on Thomas Street utilizing American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA money as matching funds for the TAP grant.
This is to memorialize using the ARPA funds as the match. I have discussed this with our finance attorney, David Floyd, previously. It is my understanding we can use ARPA funds. I sent him an email yesterday to verify that, and he must be out of the office. So this, if for some reason he comes back and says we can't use the funds for that, we're, we'll obviously come back with another plan, we're not gonna use the funds. This is assuming my previous understanding is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure it's fine, I just wanted to throw that out there. Because ARPA cha, it can change every day.
Right. It's my understanding that that can change.
Yeah.
According to whoever.
I think, I think we're good, because it's, you can use ARPA for the non-federal match portion, which is what this would be, in my opinion.
Well.
I just want his opinion.
You, you said that you were just verifying, because I know you'd spoken to the commissioner before, that you guys have already.
Yes.
But I appreciate you checking and making sure. Commissioners, anything? Vice Mayor?
I make a motion to approve the commitment of seventy-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to complete sidewalk on Thomas Street utilizing American Rescue Plan Act as matching funds for the TAP grant.
One second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
First one. Build a sidewall.
She did it.
Twenty-two. In business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Twenty-three. Make a motion that we adjourn this regular meeting.
Second again. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Mr. Farmer, if you're coming, did you sign in by any chance?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. My husband made cookies, brownies if you want.
Any maybe.
Any maybe.
You brought snacks? Good.
Something else to you. Just for Bob.
Okay, after the, we've got another meeting here.
Sorry.
Are you scared?
Concerned.
Doubt it.
Concerned.
Okay. Amy, call to order, real call, establish a quorum for the Perkins Public Works Authority meeting.
I love how you did that.
You're welcome.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason? Justin?
Yeah.
Number two, consideration and action on consent agenda.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Number four, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, Perkins Public Works Authority Board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Five. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Davis Sanitation for wastewater solid sludge disposal for the period July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
I don't know if you've realized it, but the city attorney likes to update agreements and have them on the same form. This is updating the agreement with Davis that goes along with his other agreement for residential and commercial trash. So there's no monetary changes or anything like that, it just updates it where it's suitable for everybody.
And it also tracks the, the trash contract in that it, there's a one point four percent increase annually over four years, which we have not done with this contract in the past. So it is bas, it is the, it's almost completely, not completely, the same form.
DEQ requires us to have a separate agreement for the sludge disposal, and they required of him at his landfill as well.
Well, it makes sense that it should be separate. Helps us out too, as well. Commissioners? Anyone?
Make a motion to approve agreement with Davis Sanitation for wastewater solid sludge disposal for the period of July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. One second.
I'll roll. Call her, bud.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Number six. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution number seven dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution amending water rates and sewer service charge.
This is memorializing the increase that was voted on before. Just puts it into resolution, which is where we put these.
Yes, we've already approved this.
Yes.
Right?
It's not in this form.
It's not in this format, okay. Anybody, questions?
No.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number seven dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution amending water rates and sewer service charge.
One second. Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Number seven. Acknowledgement of cancellation of purchase from Vance Country Ford of a twenty twenty-three F one fifty at a price of twenty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty cents, utilizing capital improvement sales tax funds as included in the capital improvement plan as approved at the regular meeting of the PPWA on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'm told that as far as fleet vehicles are concerned, the manufacturers aren't making as many because they were making more money selling non-fleet vehicles. So, um, we've had this truck ordered for quite a while, and I finally found out they're saying there's an issue with V-eight engines, something getting some supply, I don't know what it is. So I'm requesting, I talked to the dealer, the fleet people, finally got the right person and said, "I need a truck." If you would have told me it was a V-eight, I would have been fine with that, we could get a V-six. But what do you have now? And that's the next agenda item.
There's no cost to canceling?
Yeah, there's no cost to canceling, it's just.
There's no action on this?
You can, yeah, we would want action to cancel the purchase. So we can track the funding, basically. So we can track the funding, basically.
I make a motion to cancel the purchase from Vance Country Ford of a 2023 Ford F-150 at a price of $45,481.40, utilizing capital improvement sales tax funds as included in the capital improvement plan as approved at the regular meeting of the PPWA on December 13, 2022.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Number eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve purchase from Vance Country Ford of a 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 Crew Cab LT 4-Wheel Drive at a cost of $48,258, utilizing capital improvement sales tax funds as included in the capital improvement plan.
Saving us money.
Spending a little bit more money, actually. It's $2,776.60 more. However, it's actually, it exists.
It exists.
Somebody can sit in it, and James will be happy driving it, so.
Based upon what James is driving now, he deserves.
Yes.
So we can get it? It's on the lot?
It's, it was being delivered to the lot Monday or something, so it should be imminent. They're waiting, I told them I'd get with them on Wednesday, you know, pending action at the meeting.
I want to know if anybody has any other questions?
I make a motion to approve purchase from Vance Country Ford of a 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 Crew Cab LT 4-Wheel Drive at a cost of $48,258, utilizing capital improvement sales tax funds as included in the capital improvement plan.
Very good, I second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Number nine. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve purchase order number 2306030 in the amount of $48,258 to Vance Country Ford for the purchase of a 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 Crew Cab LT 4-Wheel Drive.
This is just to approve the purchase order so we don't have to wait 30 days, over 30 days to pay them. So this is just a technical thing, so we can pay them when we pick it up.
So because of the timeframe, we're able to just pay them straight out?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve purchase order number 2306030 in the amount of $48,258 to Vance Country Ford for the purchase of a 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 Crew Cab LT 4-Wheel Drive.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Amy put three zeros on that agenda item.
No pennies.
That means there's no pennies.
Straight across.
She's a little white hound, that's what she is. You could redact that little zero there. Number 10, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda. Everybody? Vice Mayor, do you like to do the all?
You can't call that.
You can.
No, I second it.
Okay. I make a motion that we adjourn the Perkins Public Works Authority meeting.
Second.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Amy, will you turn the camera off, please?
Sure will.
Just say goodnight, God bless.